I've got my COVID action. You would try to choose. And the good news is our numbers are being low in Wayne's Borough. In the last week, the last seven days. We've had four cases, most days or less. It comes to an average of fifteen point eight for a hundred thousand. That's just a number encapsulated for comparison sake. We don't have a hundred thousand people on this. But if we did, it extrapolated out to fifteen point eight for a hundred thousand. That is currently below numbers in Stanton and Augusta. Stanton had sort of a burst through the week. And Augusta has been sort of steadily a little bit above ours in the twenties for a hundred thousand. So as we've said many times, I think I've said at least, you know, we're all one with this. So we can't pretend that really it stops at Wayne's Borough for us. So as we go into the holidays, I encourage people to continue to be vigilant. Continue to do the right thing to protect yourself and protect your family. Because we don't want to see a surge like we did last year. Those numbers, as you recall, very scary ones, Thanksgiving, Christmas, and the new year. So on other good news, the rate vaccination continues to go up. We are seeing that our population as a whole, we've had sixty or two, yeah, fifty-three percent, maybe towards sixty-four percent of the population has gotten at least one vaccine. The adult population, Wayne's Borough is up to seventy-six percent. So we crossed that seventy-five percent threshold, which is great. I think the difference there is that now that children are eligible, five to eleven, as well as the twelve, eighteen-year-olds are already eligible, we're not getting those folks vaccinated as quickly as some areas are. So again, I encourage parents to talk to their providers, the pediatricians, and find places to get the vaccine through their friends. And if they have questions, again, great chance to talk to your provider about their insights and understanding. But hopefully we'll see those numbers stay low as we get through the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Seventy-six percent, Wayne's Borough, we're doing a great job here, I think. Those are good numbers. So thank you, citizens of Wayne's Borough, for that. Anyone else? All right. Item number six is to approve our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve our consent agenda? So, thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by vote. Thank you all very much. Item number seven is considering vouching a resolution requesting the General Assembly to introduce a bill amending the Charter of the City of Wayne's Borough to include, one, moving the date of the general election from May till November as required by law; two, imposing a ward-based residency requirement and a ward vote in compliance with the city code; and three, allowing council to appoint charter employees for over two years' term. Mr. Hamm.
Mayor Henderson, your introduction there effectively summarizes the resolution on purpose. The matter of process is the council will consider the resolution this evening. If adopted, that information will be conveyed to our delegation to General Assembly, where they will consider, hopefully, an act as requested charter changes. So unless you have questions, we're either me or you.
With no questions, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by vote. Thank you all very much. Item number eight is to receive information regarding proposed amendments to the Code, City Code pertaining to regulation of noise.
Yes, sir. Mayor Henderson and members of council. This evening, the staff presents recommended amendments to chapters fifteen and thirty-eight that they pertains to noise. And we're seeking to improve the city's ability to enforce noise ordinance, noise, the noise ordinance and noise violations. This is a relevant topic because each year there are more than two hundred noise-related calls to the emergency operations center. This year, we've had a hundred and seventy-two noise complaints, and we still have obviously a month and a half remaining in the year. Some of these calls are duplicated calls, and some of them are determined to be unfounded. Many of the calls themselves can be resolved with offenders coming into compliance with a simple consultation or conversation with a law enforcement officer. Our police department is responsible for enforcement of the noise-related provisions of the code. But many, not many, but remaining among those complaints are some offenders who won't or refuse to come into compliance without more structured and formal enforcement. The recommended improvements to the code establish a standard that is more objective, and in doing so, creates a definition, hopefully, an understanding of noise violations that are more commonly understood among citizens and more evenly and equitably applied by our law enforcement officers. Previously, the code, or currently, the code relies too significantly, in our opinion, on officer judgment rather than the objective standard. So the improvements recommended seek to turn the standard in that regard. The changes are informed and somewhat motivated by the experiences that other localities in Virginia have had, namely, Virginia Beach had a noise ordinance that was very similar to ours, and that they went through a process of having their ordinance examined in the court system and was determined that improvements, much like we contemplate, were needed to bring that into compliance with the Constitution and make it more enforceable and practical for law enforcement. Couple of things that I'd like to draw the council's attention to. Violations of the ordinance are civil penalties and not misdemeanor or criminal offenses, two hundred and fifty-dollar fine for the first offense. And secondly, I hope, you know, part of, many of the calls that we've received is how we deal with loud music across property lines. Some of the calls we've received, however, deal with noises that originate with motor vehicles. Those are a challenge to enforce for a variety of reasons, and I would want to temper our expectation about the ability that this, or improvement that this ordinance makes in enforcement against motor vehicle noises. We, our recommendation is to adopt the state code by reference, and thereby, as the state code changes, we, it's more easy for us to incorporate those changes into our code. And there is some thought that as leadership and partisan composition of the General Assembly changes in the coming calendar year, that some of the state laws that have made enforcement challenging or difficult will be relaxed. And so you may see an opportunity for some improvement in that regard after the General Assembly convenes. As a matter of process, we're simply presenting information this evening. Council will be asked to digest and contemplate this, and once I get a signal or determine or the council communicates that we're ready to move forward, we'll put it on a subsequent agenda and continue the process. This will allow for council to consider it, the public to think about it, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Ma'am. Any questions for my members? I like the way you've done this on this, it's good, thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
All right. Item number nine is to receive a status report on the Greenway Bay Three project.
Yes, sir. Our intention originally was to furnish a more content-based report, but the staff member responsible for that content, the project, is unable to attend the meeting this evening. So I'm furnishing simply a status update. It's a sort of a very brief step through the history of this project. You'll recall, originally, the concept was to designate a path through the interior of Tree Street and down of Rose Cliff Alley, or the South Alley. And as part of the obligation that we have with this funding, was needed to seek public input on that, and the concept of such a plan met significant opposition in the Tree Street neighborhood. Staff, with back reacting to that feedback from the community and with council's guidance and reaction to the feedback from the community, we went and developed a second concept with the hope of designing something that would be less objectionable to the residents in the Tree Street neighborhood. That became known as the Fourteenth Street Concept. That also was subject to a public hearing, a public feedback process, and it also, that concept also met with fairly significant opposition. At which point, our organization is faced with three options. One is to, in the face of community opposition and neighborhood opposition, pursue one of either the Fourteenth Street or the Tree Street options. The third option might be to return the spent money from the funding source. The staff suggests that a fourth option would be to explore the ability to develop a minimally disruptive plan, respond to sort of the chief objections that we heard in the public process regarding the Fourteenth Street option. And more specifically, we would attempt to minimize, not outright avoid the loss of parking, attempt to maintain two-way traffic, bidirectional traffic on Fourteenth Street, attempt to avoid impact to large trees and shrubs, fulfill the program requirements associated with the funding, and be that the services. And if we could do that, set that up for evaluation and recommendation to the council. We don't take, we, in order to more fully and informatively develop a third option, we need some feedback from BI. And we haven't received that yet, and there's some thought that it may be the end of the calendar year before we receive that. So depending on how that communication goes, it may not be until 2022, the early part of next year, that you might hear from staff. But those are the four options as we see them. Unless we receive feedback this evening, to the contrary, we'll work on exploring that third path and be back and communicate with the council.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Anyone have any thoughts, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number ten is correspondence communication, or communication correspondence agenda.
Yes, sir. I would like to provide just a few general comments related to the citizen feedback that we heard at the previous meetings, the RFP process generally. Very succinct points, and I think largely they bring some beneficial clarity to the process. First of all, it's important to understand that the RFP was issued not in an attempt to reduce expenses or reduce the cost of operating the shelter facility. And in fact, cost doesn't become a factor or a consideration unless and until we identify a qualified provider. The primary objective in issuing the RFP is to explore the ability to furnish adequate staff capacity to operate the facility presumably at the current service levels. And so I'm sensitive to the reaction and the goals and the support and appreciation and regard with which the public holds the facility. And we all should enjoy some benefit and take some venture of pride in that. But I think it's important to stress that the goal in issuing the RFP is not to reduce costs. In fact, it's difficult at this point even to forecast how, what outcomes might occur if you could identify a qualified provider. Citizens also expressed, you know, aside from the fact that generally they stated we prefer they do not outsource the operation of the shelter, but if you determine that you must do that, they listed some items of goals that they would hope to be accomplished as well. My recollection is they were interested in establishing a minimum performance outcome in terms of live, a save rate or positive outcomes for animals. I think the percentage of ninety percent was offered by a number of speakers. Secondly, there was an emphasis placed on the medical care that we provided at the facility. And an expression of this is a desire that we not reduce that. And I can assure you that the RFP does not contemplate reducing medical care or reducing expenses in that regard. Final objective, or a third objective that speaker's voice was that to preserve to the greatest extent possible relationships that we have with rescue agencies, advocacy groups, and other nonprofits and organizations that support the operation of the shelter by either furnishing volunteers, financial donation, and non-donation. And I think certainly, all of those things can be included in conversations that we have with perspective that it is a citizen who does something. And so again, I wanted to acknowledge that the emotion and passion that most of those speakers presented with, but also point out that much of the content of their message are expressions of ideas that we can incorporate into the process as we live. So maybe that's helpful to some, perhaps it's not, but I think that's a important clarification to me. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Yes, sir. All right. That brings us to item number eleven. Item number eleven is our citizen comment period. Same rules apply as I mentioned at the beginning. You'll have four minutes to speak. Green light, you'll have three and a half minutes. The green light will be on and will turn yellow at the three and a half minute mark. It will be yellow for thirty seconds and turn red when you turn red to ask you to stop your comment and let someone who will send it to someone. Okay. Evelyn Cotton, followed by Amy Hammer. And when you come up here, please tell us your name and your address.
Good evening. My name's Evelyn Cotton, and I live at seven twenty-fourteenth street here in Wayne's Borough. And I just wanted to thank you guys for really truly listening to the citizens who came forward to speak about the Greenway. And I can just commend you all. It sounds like you guys are really considering a really good track that might make everybody happy. And I also wanted to give a little input on the noise ordinance that you're considering. I wasn't real clear in my reading of it whether that really did apply or how specifically it applied to animals, specifically the roosters. And so I didn't know if that, if you might consider putting more detail on that. And I think it certainly covers barking dogs because they tend to bark continuously, and it covered those descriptors in there. And the other thing was, when you're looking at really loud places, I, you know, I would like to share my last birthday, and that was that I went to a restaurant that I'd never been to before, but it was local, and I thought, you know, I said, with the local businesses, what lesson I learned was, for your birthday, don't go to a restaurant you haven't been to before. Because I went to a restaurant, and I don't think we need to name things unless you really want to do something about it, but it was so loud, it was painful. It was fine inside the restaurant until somebody put a quarter in the jukebox. And that thing, I had noise sensitivity anyway, I'll admit, but it was so loud, I mean, I was, a week later, I think my ears were still buzzing. And, and I think that your ordinance addresses businesses are allowed to have, you know, loud noises during these times in this part of the business. But I think there should still be some limitation on the level of noise because that business that I went to was right beside a residential area. And so I just really feel sorry for those people that live in the houses behind there. I have the option of never going again, but I feel like my hearing was threatened by being in there. And I, and I really, if my food hadn't been served already, I probably would have left because it was just, it was not, I didn't have earplugs in the whole time, and it still was too loud. I feel the same way about a couple of the other places in town, but there's no men in strictly business areas and don't border residential areas. But I would just encourage you to look at that and see if something should be added, in your opinion, I think it should, in mine, to sometimes put a cap on the, on the sound that is their normal sound of, you know, music at a bar, for instance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hammer, followed by Rachel Hamel.
Good evening. My name is Amy Hammer. I live in Highland County, the president of Augusta Dog Adoptions, and a longtime supporter of SVASC, and I foster cats for them. Got me another cat last week, special needs cat. It had been sitting in the shelter for about a month, skinny, needed blood work. I am glad to hear that you're not planning to reduce the budget. I don't know how you could. I actually took the cat and paid for what it needed out of my pocket. So you may remember I talked to you at your last meeting. I did the same thing at the meetings of Augusta County and at Stanton. And I'm here again tonight just because that's how special SVASC is to us. And if we lose it, I know that I've done everything in my power to keep that from happening. An amazing thing has happened the last two weeks. Our underfunded, out-of-the-way, often overlooked shelter is finally in the spotlight. The hashtag #SaveOurShelter, and the little shelter that does, is filling Facebook threads. Fosters, volunteers, and adopters are posting their stories about what makes SVASC great. There's articles in the newspapers, and you're in the news. People who are terrified of speaking in public and have never been to a government meeting before are standing in front of you with your voices shaky and asking you to save something that's important to them. And some of these are your staff numbers, and they're City of Wayne's Borough employees. And they're getting ready to spend the holidays, not knowing if they're going to have a job January first, even though they're saving ninety-seven percent of the animals that come in, and even though they have managed that shelter beautifully without a director for months now. You have had and will continue to have the support of many groups like Augusta Dog Adoptions and Cat's Cradle. I found it interesting that the amount of animals entering the shelter from 2010 to 2020 has decreased by about a third. You have allies who invest in spay neuter services to keep unwanted pets from being born, pet food pantries, medical care, and adoption of rehoming services so that they don't end up in the shelter. If you bid it out and pay an outside agency per animal, like you did with the contract before, there is no incentive for them to keep animals out of the shelter system. The more animals they take in, the more money they get to charge you. The staffing problems at SVASC are not too big for you to fix. We ask you to continue to effectively run SVASC by investing in a highly competent director who is adequately paid and enough staff to do the job. Change the fiscal agency to the City of Stanton to foster new energy and provide a much-needed break for the City of Wayne's Borough. If the localities cannot continue to manage SVASC, please require a ninety percent or better save rate to be, to be required for whoever gets the bid. You have a shelter to be proud of. Please weigh this decision carefully. Everyone is watching and waiting anxiously. Thank you for your time and service.
Ms. Hamel, followed by Jean Fraser.
Good evening, everyone. Rachel Hamel, Florence Mystery. I just want to say that the shelter is amazing, the work that they do there. It blows my mind because they care so much. Yes, they're understaffed, but I had a chance to, you know, I pitched out a reason, and I thought about working there, but I can't pay my mortgage working there. I have to pay my mortgage. So you're understaffed. Well, they need better pay. I mean, they have done a phenomenal job the last two months, and they don't have a director. Like, that's big time stuff. I mean, they, they work hard, they're dedicated, they are, they're just beyond amazing. And I am so proud and honored to be able to volunteer and work with them, you know? They have really grown into a family. It would break my heart to see the shelter go to somebody else and to see our save rate decline. I recently finalized my adoption of my newest dog. And another shelter were not taking the time to work with her and to give her to an outside agency, you know, with Augusta Dog Adoptions, to save her. And it breaks my heart because she's a great dog. And Jean, who were my housekeeper, did let them out, and she's, I mean, must be saying, that is a completely different dog than she was at the shelter. And that's all it needs, it just needs people that are compassionate and caring and not willing to just apologize. You know, I'm going to close here. I really hope that you definitely take your time considering what you're up to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Ms. Fraser, Sally Wells. I'm sorry, Sally with a W.
Hi, I'm Jean Fraser, of 1850 Howardville Turnpike, Stuart's Draft. I have volunteered at the shelter for the past almost 10 years. And I've seen directors come and go, I've seen people come and go. I'm still there. And it's something that I really love. And it's a, is a commitment to making sure that every single life that that shelter touches is important to them. And, I mean, the staff are phenomenal. And, you know, there is sort of this myth about this massive turnover that's always going on. Um, there are people there. Tracy's been there 11 years. Two other staff members, Marshall's been there seven years, two other staff members have been there three years. People have been there two years. It isn't so much turnover. The people who are there are committed to what they are doing. I mean, and they are being paid a ridiculous amount of money compared to what you could make at a, a turkey plant or a, a fast food joint. I mean, these people, um, they do vaccinations, they give out medicine, they evaluate behavior. I mean, this is not, you know, a low-level job. This is, this is a job that is, that is really important. And it's something, this is why we are, you know, nationally recognized with this 97% rate of save rate because people are committed to this. And it's very important that it does not go backwards. And it's very, it is a family. And everybody there really cares about what they're doing. And, you know, I'm saying, yes, they're definitely, they have not been able to fill that director position because it is way below what comparable communities are paying. There are staff, staff positions that have been open for a long time and people aren't coming because, you know, they, nobody could pay a mortgage or even their rent. I want these people being, being paid. So I would just like to say, um, they put out a, sort of a solicitation for people, um, to write stories about their experiences, the doctors, you know. We got over 100, there were 148 replies of people who just were so happy to share their experiences of how the shelter had helped them. And, um, you know, I can quickly close. This is something that would never have happened at a lesser shelter. Um, this dog came in, she was 14 years old. She had a tumor. It was about the size of a football. Um, you know, I could definitely see a lot of places, this would have been like euthanization right there on the spot. But instead, they said, well, you know, can you foster her? And I said, yeah, okay, sure. I will, I'll, I will foster her. Um, I brought her home. I got a, an opinion from Animal Hospital of Waynesboro. They said, no, this thing isn't going to kill her. Um, she was 14 years old. They, they removed that, um, that tumor. She lived another two and a half years. She was out there playing ball. She was laying in the sun. She had a good life. And this is what, you know, this is what we have come to respect, uh, come to expect, and I think everybody has. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Good evening. My name's Sally Wells and I live in Stuart's Draft, Virginia. And I've seen many changes in animal welfare in this area. In 1973, I remember a little brick building you would go to and adopt the dog off of West Beverly in Stanton. And then in 1986, they decided to build a new building, they, as they say, up on the hill, the SPCA. They, um, also worked in taking in the pound, the dogs that needed adopted. And the most events that you would see would be the new kennels being built, the outside runs. Um, the SPCA also have spay neuter, um, building they put up. And they also got a new furnace in the year 2000. It would be cheaper disposal of all the animals they euthanized instead of having to send them off, which we have, we would turn an eye to the, the euthanasia of the high weight, the high rates of it because you wanted to keep a good rapport with them. You wanted to be able to go into the building and not be turned away and try to get as many as possible out. And then in 2011, a great thing happened. The localities separated from the SPCA and they started their own building and it derived from there. We was able to go in and ask rescues, feel welcome. We could walk through the, um, uh, kennels, interact with the dogs and feel that we could, um, help them in many ways. I myself adopted two dogs from there. One, a puppy that had severe mange and a stumper and parvone. And if she would have been at another locality, she definitely would have been euthanized. And then three years ago, I adopted a chihuahua, as we all know, ankle fibers. She would definitely would have been euthanized at, at the other locality, but, um, they gave her time, space, and knew that she had great potential. And they're still in my home and they're great dogs. They say history repeats itself, but does it have to? We can make changes. We can have things continue as is. The only thing that won't repeat itself is the citizens will not stand back and have other locality come in and do what they please, not keep the 90% rate. We have voices and we are the voices of the animals that get turned over and we will continue to stand for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Melby followed by Ashley Chorwini.
Wayne Melby, I live in North Sydney. I'm here representing the Australian Universalist Fellowship of Waynesboro, which is at 565 Tynan Avenue. I'm just here to thank you for continuing to consider ways to modify the Phase 3 of the Greenway so we might work out a solution that benefits the greatest number of people. If there is a way to minimize the harmful impacts and increase the benefit, I look forward to working with you to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Ms. Delaney.
Ashley asked me to sign her up because she knew she would be running late, but she's not here yet.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Kurt Lilly.
Good evening, Kurt Lilly, 218 Skyland. I would like to thank you for recognizing the citizen comments and considering other options for Greenway. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, if the new plan preserves street parking and two-way traffic flow, I'm interested in reviewing it and possibly supporting it. Um, I'm also happy to just return the funding either way. Thank you for your, for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Renee Clark.
I'm Renee Clark, I'm the Board Director of Cats Cradle. Again, I want to thank you guys for, um, Mike's comments are very appreciated. And also say our view is still, we would like for the localities to keep the shelter and not privatize it. Um, we did see that the RFP was extended, um, the deadline, which was a little concerning because, truthfully, I think a lot of us were hoping it might just go away, uh, but that didn't happen. I did, uh, recently read an article in the News Virginia that was talking about the budget differences for the shelter and that there was only a 1% increase over the, um, over four-year span. I think the article was written by Tracy Piles. And I just wanted to point that out because that's the one thing where, when you guys are reviewing the budget for next year, if the shelter is kept with the localities, I'd really like to, um, for you guys to consider some adjustments in their budget that, one, would accommodate the salary of the director to be comparable to the market on the other localities that are paying those positions, and also the staff. Uh, but it looks like there's some room for growth in, you know, the budget in general. Um, and also consider that, you know, if you guys have had it for 10 years and if, you know, you need a break, maybe one of the other localities might be willing to take it. I also spoke at all three, um, City of Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County. And they, like you guys, were very welcoming and were glad to have our input. And I just want to say again, we're here to help you. Um, we would love for you to reach out and ask for assistance. We've offered that to all three localities. I know Augusta Dog Adoption and Cats Cradle has done that. Um, the following, uh, week after we were at Augusta County, I know that the County Administrator and Ward Supervisors member actually visited the shelter, which I thought was very awesome. Um, also, we had follow-up questions and conversations with some of the city council in Stanton. So, uh, one, I would like to invite you guys, if you haven't been recently, to come out to the shelter. And, um, the staff would really appreciate it. And also, before you're making your decision on the RFP, it would be good to just lay your eyes on, um, what you're making the decision about. And then again, offer to each of you, um, any assistance or any information that we can give. We would love to help you make that decision. Um, I think one of the surprising things that I just want to make sure you guys know, the way to save money in a shelter is to reduce intake. And your shelters already reduce intake to a third. Uh, it used to be about over 3,000 and now it's just over 1,000. So that already is saving you a lot of dollars. Um, I believe when the localities were paying a private entity before, they're paying about $110 an animal. I think it was going to go up to about $130 an animal. So you can do a heck of a lot of spay neuter, you can do, um, pet food assistance, you can do phone counseling, you can definitely hire a qualified phone counselor to try to keep pets in homes. Any of those ideas that we can help you guys with, that might be other ways to save money because we do realize you just can't, you know, just spin to the sky. But, um, we would like to see other ways. And staff salaries wouldn't be one. I think my light is yellow, but again, just want to say, um, I would push for a 97% rate. 90 is good, but you currently have 97%. And definitely don't go private if you can and all help it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, thank you all for your comments tonight. Um, we're moving on to item number eight. Item number eight is called, uh, quote, leave.
Ms. Mayor, um, this meeting will recess and that the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting for the following purposes: Consideration of personal matters regarding the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the city, more specifically to discuss a chapter employee as permitted by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.
Is it a motion to, uh, is there a second on her motion? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Ms. Boylan just requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Justice Mother Allen?
Aye.
Justice Mother Short?
Aye.
Justice Mother Hostetler?
Aye.
Clear and closed, leave. Clear and closed meeting.
Wayne'sboro has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this City Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Wayne'sboro hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such business matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Wayne'sboro.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? Ms. Bordel's been here all four hours.
Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Allen?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Councilmember Hospital?
Aye.
All right, this meeting's back in order. Now do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Please a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hospital. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by law.